Okay, we'll call the meeting to orders, six thirty. This is committee of the whole meeting, administration and finance for December, the month of December. We shortened committee meeting structure in the month of December. And I have to apologize to councilor Smale, we've taken over the spot the first Monday of the month, which is normally a community development committee.
Oh, weird.
So then we move to item two, which is approval of the agenda. Treasurer's looking for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Deputy Mayor Taylor, seconded by Councilor Barrett. Those in favor, please signify. Motion is carried. And third item on the agenda, disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures this evening?
None here.
None, move on. Item number four is business arising from the previous administration and finance committee meeting. So minutes were circulated with the package. Does anybody have any questions or business arising from that meeting? If you can see why I didn't think of it. I don't think it is. So nobody? Okay, moving on then. Item number five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. We have none. So we're up to item six on the agenda, which is a discussion of the 2018 capital budget. And we do have a briefing note in front of us. And to the C A O, how did you want to proceed here? I was looking for a list of capital items, but I don't see a list. I just see the drafts, or excuse me, the submissions from the various departments.
Yeah, there was a, there was a list, sorry, there was a list associated with the overall budget package.
Initially.
Initially, back in, last month.
Well, that was the November package.
Yeah. It was just, it didn't have any dollars associated with it. It was just a project list.
There was a project list?
Yeah, that's right, Amel.
Yeah, in the original.
So now you've drawn down, you put M, P one, and P two, right?
That's right.
Got the idea behind it. So I don't have the list from the previous presentation. So how do you want to proceed here then? Because really what we're looking for is what the items are and what the dollars are.
Yeah, so I would suggest one option might be to look at each of the draft budget items for consideration tables that are attached to the information item, both department by department, and basically classifies the capital projects by either M or P one or P two, with M being ones that staff consider critical, P one being sort of next in line, ones that we feel are slightly less critical but still require to be done, and then P two might be something we would consider for future budgets but are on the horizon, maybe can be done for sure. So unless there's something that the treasurer wants to highlight with respect to her information item, I think maybe the way to do it is department by department. We'll hear if council has other projects that they'd like to add to a list or things that they don't feel need to be done.
Okay, so just to get a handle on it before we start, in the operating, draft operating and capital budgets that we saw on November the thirteenth, just refresh my memory, was there an overall dollar figure allocated to capital?
I'll let the treasurer respond to that.
Here, the overall capital, actually, I'm going to give you a sheet that I had done up this afternoon, which I'm going to photocopy, which gives a list of all of the projects and what is our funding. I'm going to help.
And by the way, now, taking a different look through the package, I do see that on page seven, there was a draft capital summary, which was capital transfers to reserves and capital budget, just gave a number for each of the five or six departments.
Correct.
And then there was a list, there is a list, but no numbers beside it. What I'm hoping for is that when, as a result of this discussion, we came out of here with a kind of, an M list and a P one list with numbers beside them.
Yeah. So I think overall total for the year 2018, you know, our capital expenses are about the same as they were last year, but we're proposing to support more of it through taxation and less through drawing down of reserves.
Yes. How we finance is a different thing.
That's right.
Yeah. And we've got the sheets from tonight's briefing note in front of us. So if we look at the briefing note, and under the administration department, there's two Ms., and they're both on the sheet that's just been handed out. And so one is the council chamber canopy at fifteen thousand, and the other is dispensable for sixteen signage.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, that's actually the Cardinal four oh one signage. Spencerville is well underway, so it'll be Cardinal, but we're working on it.
Okay, so it's Cardinal four oh one?
Yeah.
Spencerville in this area, if I didn't?
Yep, and it's being worked on now.
And they're both at about fifty each. Okay, so there's two Ms. from that department, and on their P one list, renovation, second level town hall, insulation, drywall, wainscoting, trim, electrical, at two twenty-five. And so that's their first P one. I'm not even going to look at P two, that puts us out on the street. So is there any further discussion on the administration department? Otherwise, they're just putting forward the two projects. Go ahead, Councilor Smale.
So in the renovation aspect, number item number three, has there been any money allocated into reserves? I think remember, they put anything away for that?
Annually, we've been putting ten thousand away.
Sorry?
Annually, we put ten thousand away in administration.
Just specifically for that project?
For any projects within administration.
That has about eighty-four thousand in it right now.
Correct.
You're proposing to put in ten in 2018, which would bring it up to ninety-four.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion there, I'm going to go to the next department, which is the fire department. And it looks to me like there's four Ms. on that list. Station number two, drawings and a cost estimate identifying the current and future needs for fire station two to allow finding and design for a new fire station. And so that's a fifteen thousand dollar item. And then the second item is bunker gear, bunker gear cleaning system at four thousand five hundred. And the next one is P P E cleaning room upgrade. And that's the thirty-five hundred dollar one. And the rescue strut kit to replace the homemade kit currently in service at station number one. Struts are used to stabilize a vehicle that it's resting on its side or roof to allow safe rescue operations, seven thousand five hundred. So are there any questions with any of that? See what's proposed there? That's a total ask, capital ask of thirty thousand. Now, the only thing that I would ask about that is that the bunker gear cleaning system at forty-five hundred, I thought we had set capital at ten thousand.
I could try to answer that. I think the chief's the better person to answer it, but from what I understand, the system he's looking at now is a different type of system than what he had proposed in twenty-seventeen's budget. And he's been able to find a better price for a different type of system, not as elaborate.
But he has left it in his capital.
Okay, so theoretically, it would come out of the capital and go to operating. I mean, he wouldn't get that past the treasurer, would he? She wouldn't allow it.
Not that.
Well, just that it keeps it off the asset management list.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, the first P one is, I'm just going to leave that sit for now, and the first P one is van one, truck eight replacement. Van one and truck eight are both twenty years old. Van one is used to carry firefighters' gear and equipment. Truck eight carries the jaws of life, medical and rescue equipment. It may be possible to phase out both vehicles with a single unit, hold the count, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's a big bite. That's a big bite, comments of any?
Does van one carry personnel? I mean, the way it's written, firefighters come on gear. So is it carrying firefighters?
Yeah.
So there's personnel involved here. I wouldn't want to, I would think anyway, that we wouldn't want the risk of breakdown of a vehicle that had the people who were going to attempt to put the fire on.
But what is the, what is the condition of the vehicle? Twenty years doesn't value much.
Well, clearly, the chief feels it's probably going to get us through another year, or it would be an M as opposed to a P one.
Right.
It's certainly something we need to consider. I was just, actually, Mel, maybe you can answer what the current proposed transfer to reserves is on vehicles for the fire department? I don't want to go by my memory.
Proposing forty thousand transfer to the reserves to bring the total up to two forty-two. What I'm worried about though is that it's not going to be long before they're looking for a pumper, to replace the pumper that was bought around oh seven, oh six, oh eight. That pumper that we bought in oh seven, oh six, oh eight, which was a mainline pumper tanker, is coming up, it's frontline, I understand, and it's now coming up to ten years. Now, I'm not stuck on the ten-year thing, because I've been talking to a couple of other mayors, and they don't automatically replace at the end of ten. It's, but I'm just wondering if, are we looking, because I don't see, I don't, well, water tank upgrades is on his list, but that's on the way down at eight. So I don't see anything on the horizon there, and I just want to be sure that we're comfortable with that. Okay, comments of any? Other people want to get in here? Okay, go ahead.
Are we going to come back to this later on?
Yeah, I think so. This is just first run through.
That's my, I'm set's case, I'm happy to just do a first one.
But remember though, that what comes out of this meeting provides guidance for staff in the interim period.
And the question I have is, when those trucks are replaced, are they saleable? Will we, will we be able to get any cash out of them?
About twenty-year-old vehicles are not going to.
I know, but we haven't been known to give them to other communities in the past.
Yeah, so they don't, unfortunately, in Ontario, everybody's under the same set of rules and regulations for how old and how much wear and all that kind of good stuff for their vehicles, so there's no market, basically, or very little market for them. I think, you know, I mean, I think our capital, our vehicle capital replacement schedule is, is pretty well established, and, you know, we need to make sure that we're putting money away into reserve to replace vehicles. But I think this particular project here, you know, gives us an opportunity to potentially combine two vehicles into one, which, you know, which is always a good thing, end up with one thing now. And the other thing with fire trucks, of course, is that you commit to buying them, spending money on them, takes two years, generally two budget cycles to get them in place, so.
Well, that was my question, though, when I look at the, at that P one, item five there, is the type of vehicle that carries the jaws of life, medical and rescue equipment, is that a, is that a specialized piece of equipment? Maybe director of operations could answer.
Yeah, Dave could probably better answer that. It's a, I think it's a, what you see is the rescue van, eh, or the rescue truck.
Correct.
Yeah. It is, it is somewhat specialized vehicle. Most are in the fire service with that, with that respect.
Okay, so I'm not certainly proposing that that P one be added, and I think if everybody's comfortable, we'll just leave that sit for another year. As you say, the fact that it wasn't on the list indicates that he's comfortable for another year. Okay, we'll go on then. So then the next list that we're looking at is public works. Yes, deputy mayor is taking leave, expressing regrets, has another commitment. So I'm at the, the draft capital for public works, there are quite a number of Ms. here, seven that I see. The first is, now they're in a different order than they appear on the, they're in a different order on the sheet than they are on the briefing notes. So the first one on the sheet is replacement of truck one for thirty thousand dollars. Vehicle is used by the road superintendent for patrol, and mileage as of September the thirtieth is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So that's the patrol vehicle. So discussion of any? Doesn't give us, oh, it's a two of twenty-eleven, so twenty-eleven coming up twenty-seventeen, eight years old. Okay, and so then the next item on the sheet is the Gallup Canal North Bridge pedestrian, which one is it on the briefing note?
Second.
Five.
Which one are five?
Five.
Oh yes, bridge repairs, there it is. The all pedestrian railing replaced, forty-nine thousand. And that's just the railing, right?
Correct.
Is that a, is that a, that's an estimate, an engineer's estimate?
That's an engineer's estimate based on our bridge and culvert study that was completed earlier this year.
Okay, so that shows as item two, that's one. And then the next item is Mary Street, Second Street, paving after storm upgrades. Mary Street, Second Street intersection and Kiefer Street, south of County Road two, road repairs after drainage work, thirty thousand. Now that's in New Exeter, is it? Kiefer Street?
Yes.
Yes, and Mary Street, Second Street.
Turns down.
By the school?
By the school.
Yeah. And what's the proposal there? What's the proposal there?
Certainly, with respect to Mary Street, Second Street, that would be in conjunction with proposed upgrades to the South End Ritzburg Public School in the summer of twenty-eighteen. So as part of that, we would, we would do some upgrading around that intersection to improve drainage.
Okay, now, just say a little bit more, there's something proposed for Second Street in twenty-eighteen?
With, with South End Public School.
What's, what's happening there? Is it our project or?
It is not our project, it would be the school board project.
And what is our project?
A renovation.
At the school?
At the school.
Oh.
They're doing some work on their parking area?
Yes.
As well as their bus access area there.
And then want to close it?
I was just going to say that you drive by there, and people are parked on both sides of the street, and it really looks congested.
So have you seen the project proposal?
I have seen a preliminary layout of, of where the school parking would be, but I don't think anything's been approved yet.
Okay, so what are the, just give us a rough idea what the proposal is.
That there would be a bus lane area on the west side of the school, so it would, you would come in off of Second Street, and then, and then exit, exit on the Mary Street. And then the teacher parking would, would comprise the, most of the area on Second Street.
So that involves crossing a ditch?
Correct. And then there needs to be some improved drainage, because they would, they would probably be placed, well, with the additional asphalt, we're going to have additional water.
Yes, okay.
So, and that, that's overdue for some, some culvert replacements.
The school's slated to close?
With the school slated to close, yeah. On the books for closure.
What year?
Well, unknown. They say when they get the money to build a new school at Wellington, when they get provincial money to build a new school at Wellington, then Edward Street, Sub-Ed will close.
So we could dump the money into these premises and properties or?
Not our call, school board's call, really. Okay, so our situation, we shouldn't have, maybe shouldn't have got off track there, but it's always nice to know what they're thinking. But our, our immediate ask is for the thirty thousand dollars, well, twenty at Mary Second, and then ten at Kiefer, so.
Correct.
Any, are any further questions there? You can see what they have in mind. Okay, now, then we go to the next one, which is gravel surface treatment roads. And the list shows Adams Road, sixty thousand. I'm just looking at surface treatment program, Connell and, Connell and Adams, hundred and twenty, sixty each, right?
Approximately.
And Heineman Road then, so that would be the rest of Heineman Road from County Road two, or no, County Road twenty-two, all the way to the boundary?
Correct.
East? Okay. And then, and what would, what would the treatment be there on Heineman Road?
At, at this particular stage, we're still looking into either double surface with matting or actually pulverized and, and an asphalt surface. The pricing, the estimates seem fairly close. We're still working out some final details.
Okay, so, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just, just for clarification, so we're going from County Road twenty-two east to the boundary with, with South Dundas or wherever, right? Or North Dundas, or in that vicinity, right?
Correct.
And I guess for clarification too, that's Heineman Road, and I'm thinking Adams Road, that's the one where Adam Cemetery runs, beside, you're going back towards Venter, right?
Correct.
Are they not, are those roads not paved roads? Are they not like paved rather than surface treated presently?
Adams Road is, is asphalt. What we're proposing is right, right around that intersection of Connell and Adams, that short section where.
Oh, in, in the, or in the village?
Very, very close to, to the Venter area.
Okay, okay, just for clarification purposes, and Connell, of course, it's a gravel road that's going to be totally resurfaced, right, that's surface treated, right?
The majority of Connell was done last year.
Was done last year.
And there's a final section that needs some drainage improvements before surface treat.
Right, and Connell was done as far as that intersection?
Correct, or around approximately that, the Henry Farm location.
And just the further, Heineman Road is all paved from the old sixteen right down to the, what, to the corner there of twenty-two? It's all paving, right paving, it's not surface treated?
Correct, it is, it is asphalt from County Road forty-four, twenty-two.
But we're going to surface treat that from twenty-two to the boundary? We're not going to?
We're, we're in that final stage as far as cost, to determine what, what the best avenue is, whether, whether it's double surface treatment, which is the current treatment on the South Dundas side, or whether asphalt is more viable.
Can I, may I just follow up, Mr. Mayor, please? I just, I just noticed in one of the, like, public works, and we're talking about twenty-seventeen budget, looking at, on that one, page one, that was in our package, and we got one mil, one point six, let's say one point six million spent this year, and we're looking at one point four, so we're, we're reducing to more than two hundred thousand. So I guess, I can see we did more surface treatment last year, I'm aware of that. But I guess where I'm coming from, I thought, I've always been under the impression that we were going to do, if they were paved, we'd replace them with pavement, if they were gravel, we're going to go surface treatment, and the eventual savings was going to be done more rapidly, so that we could maybe not have to purchase a grader down the road at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are we still on track to, to do that when the grader becomes on the hit list, more or less like these, the tanker and the van are tonight? Because I, I remember one thing being shown a few, a few years back, and I remember saying, if you want to get more bang for your buck, you were, you had, you had comparisons to some of the streets, James Street and Joseph and that, and you had something like eighteen kilometers could be done on gravel roads, I think it was eighteen, for about one point one million dollars. You could get a lot of, a lot done at that, you know, for surface treatment. So I just wonder, like, we don't seem to be, we did more last year, but we're cutting back this year, and I just guess, are we on, are we on schedule to replace that grader? I guess that's, that's where I'm coming from. Am I making sense here?
Well, we already declared one grader surplus, and I think it's even gone to sale, has it not?
It was, except the auction was canceled, but it would have been, had it had the auction on hand.
Okay, okay.
But if, maybe, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to speak to Mr. Councilor Rouse's question, that's the program, the gravel surface treat program, and maybe we struggle a bit with terminology as to what's surface treating and double surface treating and paving and all those different things actually mean. But the, the program of moving from gravel to surface treated was always intended to be done every third year, with the two years in between, to allow us to use our capital project, capital funds to do regular maintenance on existing paved roads. That's why you saw a greater effort on it last year, and you will see a greater effort on it again in twenty-twenty. We're actually a year behind the original, the original project schedule was to do the first bunch in twenty-sixteen, the second bunch in twenty-nineteen, and the third bunch in twenty-twenty-two. We're, we're one year behind on that project, but it was never intended to be done one year after another. It was always intended to spread it out a little bit, so that we could do other things in between.
Okay, so where am I here then? So, so anyway, the long and the short of it is, is that the final, the final treatment on Heineman Road has not yet been decided. But we do know that the sections of Heineman Road that have been done, they were done over, I think, three-year period, are double surface treatment, hot road mix.
The two sections of Heineman Road are, are hot mix.
Right.
Correct.
And I think, I think the intent of, of Councilor Rouse's comment was, if we've done the section from forty-four to twenty-two as hot road mix, double lift, then are we going to now change the treatment from County Road twenty-two to the boundary? I think that was the intent of the question.
And I think that that's a fair question. Well, I think what the intent was to, to match what South Dundas has, so that it carries on into a similar type of road, but as the director of operation has said, he's, he's looking at that to see what the best way forward is.
Okay, so we'll leave that kind of smoking for a little while then. So that's the public works now going on down the list. The next is preservation treatment, five point five kilometers, and that five point five kilometers, I'll get that on the list, is, oh, this says five point five kilometers of roads with a preserv, a preservation treatment, but doesn't say which roads. You just want that number of dollars allocated to that purpose.
Correct.
Okay, and then resurfacing roads, you've got Browsfield Road in, and where is that one? Here it is, road, item number two on the briefing note, road resurfacing program, Browsfield Road, three hundred and seventy-eight. But again, same question. So we did. So we did Browsfield Road from Mainsville to County Road twenty-two. So now which section are we talking about and what treatment?
We, we, we are talking hot mix from twenty-two to the border.
From twenty-two to the border, east?
Yes.
Okay. And that's hot mix?
Correct.
Okay, so any questions there? All right, and so then the next item on the brief, on the sheet handed out tonight is Walker Street. And Walker Street appears in the briefing note as the first item at the top, road reconstruction program, Walker Street, four hundred and fifty thousand. Now, my understanding is that that would then be part of a full reconstruction, including the infrastructure underneath.
That's correct.
And, and can you just give us an idea of what the total quantum is on that total project, infrastructure plus resurfacing?
I'd be going off the top of my head, so don't quote me on it, but around, uh, one point five million?
Okay, so now, and the one.
Sorry, one, one point two.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a little high.
Okay, one point two, and, and it's the subsurface infrastructure, sewer only, that we've applied, uh, for the program, right?
Plus this, plus the road.
Plus the road. The road would be to our account, and we're, we're hoping to finance the other as a result of the grant, if we're successful with the grant.
No, the grant was for everything except water, so sewer, storm, and road.
Oh, okay, but not water?
Not water, because the consultant felt that weakened our application.
Okay, and, and the, so the ask here, the four hundred and fifty thousand is to match the grant dollars? Right? Or not match, but to, yeah, to supplement. Now, obviously, I don't think we moved to Walker Street surface. This, we wouldn't expend this four hundred if we were not going to do the whole project. Am I right about that?
I will certainly say it would not be a cost-effective approach.
Is that the same as saying no?
Yes.
All right. Any questions here? Everybody understands the program, okay? So now I'm moving to the next, I'm not even going to look at the P one, P two.
I, actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I think we should look at that rear road reconstruction. Um, that's one of the, when we did the culvert on the rear road, it's one of the areas that we got a considerable, and vocal complaints about. Um, so we did move up a little bit because we realized our traffic counts were higher than we had anticipated. So it's just, it's moved up a little in the, in the list.
Okay, now, when you say moved up on the list, has it moved up on our five and ten-year plan? Has our five and ten-year plan been updated as a result of the work that we did this year? That's the first question. Haven't we done it?
Not for twenty, not with the twenty seventeen re-dos, no.
Oh, okay. So when you say it's moved up?
On this list.
On this list, okay. And it is, it's heavy traffic counts. And the two ninety-seven that's in there, what is, for two point two kilometers, that's not hot roll mix, double lift, is it?
That is, uh, that is hot, that is hot mix, that's pulverized.
Pulverized, and then two layers of hot roll mix?
Single.
Single layer. So my question would go something like this. If the OCIF grant does not come in for Walker Street, would we use a portion of the four hundred and fifty allocated to Walker Street for rear road? Was that, is that what your backup position would be? Or do you have a, a, a different backup position? Like, number nine, addition to fleet for Director of Operations? Now, that's a fair question.
That's not in my backup plan.
And to be fair to the Director of Operations, it was the Treasurer and the CIO who insisted he put it in there.
I think it's about time.
That's cer, that's certainly something that could be considered. Long, long and short, the, the Walker Street needs to be done.
Yeah, we'll cross that bridge in other words when we come through.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, that's pretty much something that we should be talking about, because I can't remember the quantum of the OCIF application. What were we anticipating to get out of that application? One point two million? No, one point two less four fifty.
No.
One point two less four fifty, less, less water. Go ahead.
If I may add here, I, I, I think we're just, we're talking here as a drainage and so forth, right, stormwater management? It's, you, you, Walker Street is written down here on the, this, this week's, it's three hundred and thirty thousand and four hundred and fifty for the, uh, roads. It's, so.
The Walker Street?
You see here, Walker Street showing stormwater management here on this, this sheet that we, we had this week, in our package this week? You, you know what I'm talking about here?
No.
The next, the next, down from, uh,
Oh, on the next, on the next.
Down on the next slide here, on the next slide, we're looking at public works, and stormwater management.
Uh, I can't. The next slide is what the council is, oh.
The next sheet is showing Walker Street is three hundred and thirty thousand, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
I got you, I got you, I got you, number one.
So that's three, three thirty, three thirty. So three thirty and four fifty, then, right, we're, we're talking around eight hundred thousand, right?
Plus, plus the sewer, two sixty-five is ninety.
Sixty-five, okay.
So, so I think that the, the submission was for around one point two million, and we're looking for ninety percent of that to be covered through the OCIF.
Ninety percent?
Ninety percent.
Yes, ninety percent.
So we'll do nine, nine hundred and seventy, approximately, nine hundred and seventy thousand to be covered.
Okay, and if you got that full grant?
Correct.
You, this, this item number, uh, under stormwater management, item one, which is the Walker Street drainage improvements, they would be included in that?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Right, correct, yeah. I just want to get to how, how these things tie together. Okay, well, what, what is our, what is our window to know the status of that grant application?
We expect it here in January, I think, is what we're looking for.
It is, I agree.
Yeah, I think, um, the, the sheet that the Treasurer provided you a few minutes ago gives an idea of what we're expecting from, from the OCIF application. If you just take a quick peek at that, you'll see that she has
Two sixty S.
Uh, four hundred and five thousand, uh, revenue from OCIF application for, you know, a net cost of forty-five thousand on the, uh, Walker Street road portion, and thirty, what is it, thirty three thousand on the, on the Walker Street stormwater. So, I mean, that gives you a better idea of what kind of money we're hoping for from OCIF.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out, because I see it now, yes.
What's your probability of getting it? Your guess?
Yeah, roll the dice. But, but, but on the other hand, I think it's fair to say that there's been a fair amount of diligence, not only diligence, but lobbying, et cetera, that went into that application. An awful lot of work with our consulting group that we were using. And, uh, I'm assuming that that's going to have involved a fair amount of collaboration with the consulting group and the, the Treasurer and the Director of Operations. So, uh, I would put, you know, I, I don't know how you judge these things, because I haven't had familiarity with this program, but generally, when you get that kind of input upfront, you increase your chances quite significantly.
And the, the other, uh, Mr. Bradley, the other part of that is that this, that funding is application-based, but they don't allow municipalities to apply two years in a row. So anybody who's got money last year is not allowed to apply this year. So we have a little, we get a little better opportunity, I guess, because not everybody's going after the same pot of money.
Now, if, if you don't get what you've applied for, like the million dollars, uh, they, they will grant something, like, let's say, seven hundred thousand, or how will they work it?
I don't think that's been what they've done in the past. They've fully funded projects until there's no money left.
Or zero.
Yeah.
Most play, most, most grant application programs worked that way.
We, we were allocated, allocated, that we could apply for as much as one point eight million. Um, we didn't apply for that much, we're hoping that, we're hoping that that has an effect on the outcome, but.
And do we know how they score? Because they're going to take all these applications and score them, right?
Yep, we do, we have a pretty clear idea. They look at our need, our financial need, which, and they look at, um, our asset management program, and they also look at, uh, our, our safety record. In other words, it's one of the reasons we pulled the water out of the application, because we have a very good water system with no critical failures. So they don't see us as being in need, because we don't have a well water advisory or anything like that ever happen. So we, we tried to stress the environmental, um, impacts of the projects to, uh, indicate that the infiltration to the sewer system is creating potential for, you know, overruns into the St. Lawrence River, and the stormwater system needed to be segregated for the same reason and focus our application there. Our asset management plan works against us a little bit until we get a beefier.
So, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't go to our balance sheet or the port money kind of, uh, dollars?
If you look at the FIR, yeah.
So, you don't, you don't feel there's risk there that we may, uh, not fall into their favor?
I, I, possibly, but I really don't want to turn down that seven hundred thousand that we get from them.
No, no.
Yeah, okay, I don't want to be a laborer, it's just that we've got a lot of money invested here, or at least planned to be invested. And if we don't get that grant, we're going to have to do some retrenching of some kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that will, I think we can postpone that discussion until, until we know, until we know what's happened here. Yeah, I think, I'm glad, I don't think we have much choice but to postpone that decision. Okay, so, um, I'm glad the Councilor, you brought that, uh, I'm glad you brought that up with the, uh, with the Walker Street storm management, because I see where it is now on our, you know, book on both sheets. So then let's, uh, go back, we just finished then public works. So now we're on the stormwater management thing, and that's, the first item on that list is one we've just discussed. What's next on that is drainage improvements on Connell and Adams. And so that's another ten to go on, uh, to go on to Connell and Adams in conjunction with the surface.
Correct.
Right? And then Johnstown Drainage, uh, Mary Street, Second Street intersection part of school, there's that one again, coming there.
Correct.
And then Kiefer Street Storm Management Improvement, it's coming in again at ten, and walk, okay. So that's the whole, uh, program put together with surface and stormwater management.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion there, any further discussion? Councilor?
If I may just have clarifications, there's two clarifications. I, I see down there in your P two, you're talking about Johnstown Drainage. And that's been, uh, something we looked at and had a kind of a game plan, ten-year plan from the R.B. Anderson report, and some of it's been done, not to great extent, but there's, there's a hundred thousand there. You're looking at as a P two. I just wondered if, I know it wasn't part of the school project, but I know there was parts of Mary Street going, going north. There were some people that I know, I'm thinking of a particular person, I think it Dave Williams, about two years ago, we mentioned. He said that they'd do it his driveway because he understood the township was going to be doing some, some work on Mary Street. And they'd like to not start it before, before anything was done. So I just wondered, is there, is there going to be with this, I know it's a P two, but is there going to be any plan to be more, more extensive with, with our R.B. Anderson plan? And, and extend when we're doing the school, it's, he's almost right across the school near the, uh, near the church, right, the Jehovah's Church in that area? I'm just wondering if it's going to be, would he be affected or, or something, you know, and then he could get, this is a, an ongoing thing. He was trying not to be presumptuous and do a driveway, redo it, thinking township has had a plan. I just.
Yeah, um, through, through the chair, there, there is still that plan that exists, um, but we certainly have been haven't been moving forward as aggressive until the, um, outlet issue gets resolved.
That was a, that was a game plan at the time. And just, can I further, just, I just wondered too, the other, we, we've done, you've got the Johnstown Drainage where, um, there's something else came up. Oh, the, the, uh, we're going to do, again, this is paving, I'm going back to paving, and I'm thinking drainage and paving here. I'm thinking of the Johnstown Community Center, per se, we just decommissioned a well, and we dug a new well, with the intent that there was going to be some paving in my head of the game here, was this, am I getting into, uh, the Recreation Department more than I am? Okay, I know, I, I know I read it, okay, so I don't want to be jumping ahead, but anyway. Uh, the other thing was, I had a question, and I remember Mr. Bear, I think it was with the Spenterville Drainage. There was something being done as a stopgap measure. We did, uh, something to appease that drainage, uh, just, just west of that here and so forth. And I see two Spenterville drainages on, on here, the, the P one and number four, and the P two and number seven. I just wondered, are they interconnected somehow, or are they, are, are they two separate issues? And are they related to what Councilor Barrett brought up, uh, in, in the past? Is that been rectified, that drainage issue here in town?
Depends on who asks.
Okay, okay, I just, anyway, from my, from my knowledge, I just wondered, those two, if they were, you know, why they?
Through, um, through, through the chair, what we're, what we're looking at is, is a more long-term plan of, of improving, um, storm management in, uh, within, within Spenterville. There's a lot of asphalt with very limited, um, catch basin system, and where, where we can start to channel and, and direct some of that water, especially with the, with, uh, you know, more frequent, heavier events. So with respect to the area that Councilor Barrett had brought up, in, in the past, there was, um, drainage improvement down there, and, uh, that is correct. It, it depends on, on whom you speak to and, and at what time, on the significance of that improvement. But I think overall that, that a reasonable outlet has been established, so.
In that area?
In, in that area, and, and now I think we can improve some of those areas around that, now that there's an outlet established.
So with these two items that are in here, uh, fifty and fifty, what are the troublesome areas that, that, that that money would be addressed to?
I, I, I would say in that immediate proximity of where that outlet was established.
Okay, the re, the reason I'm asking is because of the problem at the little garage, what's it, CNC? And we know that the school board is, I'm hoping that the school board is going to address the problem that they've got on the school property, which sends their sheet water right down into the little garage in the house behind it. And, uh, I'm just wondering whether we're going to be required to try to match something with them there.
At, at this stage, I, I, I'm not aware of, uh, anything with respect to, to, to being able to match that, but there's no, there's no doubt that, um, there are some drainage concerns throughout the village that, that will need to be addressed.
Okay, but that's partic, that particular one, has there been any follow-up from the school board since that last event where, uh, you know, where we had the water actually in the, in the house and in the garage?
The immediate follow-up is that they have done nothing, uh, that would have caused a change.
But are there any plans?
Well, I, I, I would say with that, the initial response, if they are indicating that they didn't do anything, they wouldn't be looking to correct anything. I, I'm, what I'm indicating to you is that their response is that they've done nothing on that property that would have. that would have caused a change, that would cause that water run down there.
So therefore, we don't have to do anything? That's a big leap.
Therefore, they don't have to do anything.
Therefore, they don't have to do anything.
No, 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 I mean, that's the point that I'm getting at, that's their line of reasoning, it's flawed, it's a flawed premise.
There, there's, there's some flaw, but there, there's also some additional investigation that needs to be looked at to find out what has changed.
Well, I'm hoping that we're, in the interest of our taxpayers, I mean, a residential taxpayer and a commercial, I'm hoping that we're keeping on top of that, because, I mean, something has changed, because I'm quite sure that whoever opened that garage X number of years ago didn't open it with water flowing through his, his service bay. And whoever owns that house didn't buy it on the understanding that they'd have water flowing through their kitchen, which I've seen, so...
And, and we are, yes, and through, through, we, we are working on it, but a, a lot of these issues that supposedly arise at, at, at a large event have, have taken place over several years, and trying to get back to trace items that have been changed that end up causing this, it's not a, it's not a simple process.
Okay, and, and besides, I should apologize, because the long and the short of it, doesn't have anything to do with these two $50,000 items on, on the stormwater management, so I apologize for that. Okay, so, just on the stormwater one, we understand what the program is there on the briefing note, and we understand what the, the numbers are, unless somebody has additional questions that they want to raise from there. So if, if not, then I'm gonna move on to the next department, which is Recreation. And I think this is where, Councilor Morell, you had a question about pavement in the parking lot at the South Ed Center.
Right, I, right, I did, I want to commend the, oh, I want to commend all of us down for this, the information we've provided here, and the selection of the, the areas where they consider the primary focus has to be. I think it really is a good, a good awakening for, for me personally, and I, I hope others around the table think likewise. I'm amazed, I was teasing our manager of Facilities and Recreation, when he came in, I said, you want that, you still want that deep fryer there? It's, it's been on the list for quite a few years, and I, I think it's been relayed a few times. But anyway, I'm, I'm amazed with the three main areas, and all of our recreational areas that we, we provide. And you're looking for capital costs of, with Ms., where you consider needing repair, needing to be looked at, of basically 48.5 within the number of facilities and parks and the things that we have, I think it's pretty reasonable. But I guess the one that struck my eye is that, I guess, now that we have the well removed from the center of the parking lot, so there's Virgin Indy Center, and it's decommissioned, and we've got a new well opened at the east there, just past, just where the walkway starts. I just, that, that asphalt in there is really a mess, it's, it's a total mess. It was, to me, it was done somewhat a few years ago, like patching, was it charting, when Mr. late, Mr. Price had the business and stuff, and he did? I don't know how many years, I'm guessing, what, 12, 13 maybe in there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? And it's torn all the smithereens down. I just, now that we've got the well out of there, I, I guess I'm just thinking, maybe this is one time I'm looking at, not, because, I, I like to look at the big picture in the township, but this is one time I'm looking at the needs of the Johnstown community. And I just wonder if that could be considered a move up, because the total amount is 48.5 for the other three, and $25,000 for this as a P1. And we've got the well out of there, and I don't, I, I just think that, you know, getting it done now, the well's, the well's decommissioned, and now we get some good paving in there, hopefully it'll be better quality or whatever, that's, rather than being all ripped to shreds and so forth. I just, I'm giving my personal opinion, this is something I would like to see done with Johnstown community, rather, you know? I, I vibe with Hyman, I vibe with other areas, but this is the time that I think I'm gonna focus on local account. Just if that can be done, that's all.
We're gonna get a new list. This is the first strong indication I've had of a, of a, an addition, possible addition. And I think the canteen fryer will be going to operational, will it not? I mean, it, didn't we, didn't we set the, the bar at $10,000 for capital?
The threshold is five.
It was five?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, so it is a capital item?
But I, overall, that's, that's pretty, to me, more than reasonable, asking for 48.5 in the main focus areas for, for a Recreation Department, and the amount of amenities we, we entail. I think that's very, very fruitful.
So...
You look at the big picture.
Okay, so, further discussion on that particular issue, do you want to jump in here?
Just whenever you're finished with that discussion, I, I promised the Deputy Mayor that I would advocate for her project after her absence.
Okay.
I got mine in first.
Unfortunately, timing doesn't count here. Okay, so, do you want to speak to that now, then?
Yeah, I would just, there's a, a document on everyone's desk tonight, that, that the Recreation Committee has been working on, and there's an awful pile of detail to it, but I'll, I'll boil it down. The, the triangle piece of property in Cardinal that is between Legion Way and Candlewood Two, for lack of a better description. The Deputy Mayor has been working closely with South Nation Conservation, and I believe Mr. Spencer has been at a couple of meetings to talk about the potential to develop a, an accessible dock off, off of that piece of property. She has some commitment, nothing in writing, but some commitment from South Nation to provide a few thousand dollars for it as well. We think there's some funding opportunities, either through the Sports Culture and Recreation Fund that's just been announced, or potentially the Enabling Accessibility Fund, and, you know, she, the Deputy Mayor would like to add that project to our capital list, knowing that the municipal contribution will be relatively small if we didn't partner with these other groups for funding. So, she just would like that added to the list for Recreation this year. I think likely to the tune of not more than $20,000 by the time we get funding from the other partners, and that should more than cover it. We don't have good estimates on it yet, but...
Okay, so that would be the addition, 20. And if we get, if we get down to, if we get down to tight budget discussions, it can be reduced, because we're planning on some, some other sources to go to the same project. The project can be either scaled up or scaled down.
Where would the dock go?
Actually, maybe Mr. Spencer would like to answer that, you were on site?
Yeah, it's, um, so when you go down the Legion, where, where the old marina used to be, the old building, there's the, the dock, not a dock, but there's the spent pier wall that's there.
Right.
About three-quarters of that pier wall is in good shape, and there's just the very end that has started to, to break off. It would go in that area right there.
Okay.
So it would be on the inlet, it wouldn't be on the riverside itself.
Right. And, so in the deliberations, did they look at parking, like, do people launch there? I mean, is the, would the plan be a dock that's used for launching, or just a...
No, this is strictly, it's a, it's a program through the South Nation Conservation, it's a dock for, for fishing. Strictly fishing. So it's not a boat launch.
A launch?
No, absolutely not, it's strictly an area where kids can go down, and again, it has to be handicap accessible, so there is a little bit of work that will need to be done there, but it's strictly just for fishing, and the program's at South Nation. Okay.
Okay. All right, so, those two possible additions to the list that we've seen. Now, that takes us through the departments that were in the briefing note, except the waste disposal site.
No, I could.
So the waste disposal site, we still have $15,000 in the capital for carry-forward transfer station upgrades and a well. Work in progress, you've got nine from this year's budget, requiring six from next year's budget, is that the idea? Or, or is it the 15 going straight through this year's taxation?
Yeah, that's correct, we have nine, we have 10 in this year's budget, and we have spent a little bit, but not... If you look at the sheet that, that Treasurer provided tonight, it shows the $15,000, and then a work in progress of nine, so it's 2018 from taxation of $6,000.
Okay, so the, the nine will be carried forward from this year?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And where is that nine, when it carried, what, is it, it's in one of the reserves, is it?
No, it was, it was budgeted, we, we had budgeted $10,000 for waste disposal closure costs in 2017 that did not get spent.
Okay. So any questions there? Okay, so, so that takes us through those items of capital. Then the other items of capital that we have on our, our list that was handed out tonight is for the, the three standalone water and wastewater systems. And for the Spenterville system, looking at my sheet handed out tonight, no capital projected at all for 2018. And for the Cardinal wastewater, $295 for Walker Street, of which, we're hoping $265 comes from the OCIF application, and 30 comes from the users, right? And then realign the easement Henry to William, I'm familiar with that one. Henry to William.
That's sanitary sewer relining from the Henry Street Pumping Station through, through the easement that runs at the rear, up to, up to William Street, at the back part of William Street.
Okay, so that's just the relining of sewers.
That's the sewer relining, yes.
And that looks like that comes totally out of the user fund.
Correct.
User reserve. And then on the Cardinal Water System, there's another 206 in there for Walker Street, which we're hoping that that's gonna come from either the OCIF application or the gas tax.
It won't come from OCIF.
It won't come from OCIF?
No, we didn't, we didn't, that's the...
Oh, that's right, we didn't apply for that. So the 90 would have to come from the gas tax, and 116 from, from the user fund. So that's the plan. Are there any questions about the plan? Remember, all plans are made to be broken, changed and revised. As my son says, it's written on paper, not etched in stone. Okay, so, are there any further discussions with regard to item six, then, the capital budget? Hearing none, I'm about to move on, we have a few other items on the agenda. Item number seven on the agenda, going to the action information items. The first item is 7A, which is minutes of settlement for debris. And we have a recommendation here, that committee recommends that council accept the minutes of settlement for rule number da-da-da-da-da, and process an adjusted tax billing to the owners. So we would be refunding to the owners the total of 313, of which 167 is from our account, and the rest is courtesy of the school board, or the county, is that correct? Is that correct? And Councilor Smale is moving, and Councilor Bear is seconding. Further discussion here, if any? Hearing none, I'm about to call a question, those in favor? Motion is carried, or the recommendation is carried, come to council. And the next one is the Assessment Review Board Appeals Representative, again, as a briefing note. There is a recommendation associated with the briefing note, before I call for a mover and a securer of the recommendation, I wanted to see if there's any discussion, because I have a few questions before we get into looking at the recommendation. Is there, now, did anyone have any questions, want to go first here? Hearing none. So my question is this, then, to the CAO first, and then I'll see how you handle the question. So, the recommendation is that council delegate authority to initiate and file notices of assessment appeal for any property in the township of Edensburg Cardinal with the Assessment Review Board. Now, once we approve that recommendation, the delegated authority would have the authority to file notice of assessment to increase focuses, to increase assessment, as well as decrease. It's not done very often, but it is done. I have the right, as a citizen, to appeal anybody else's assessment and ask that it be increased. This would, this would give the same authority to this delegated person. But I, I just want you to clarify that that's not the intention here. Or is it?
No, actually, it's not the intention. Basically, what, what the regulations have done to us is they've said, if you want to appear at the ARB, you must have delegated authority to make decisions on the spot. In other words, staff can't attend an ARB hearing and then come back to council for direction.
Right.
So that's, that's all we're trying to do here, is make sure that we, if, and we don't very often, I mean, in the time that I worked at the township, I can probably count on two hands how many times we've actually appeared at an old ARB hearing. It just, it doesn't happen very often, and we often have Dave Publo from the county giving us a hand with those kinds of things as well. But without the delegated authority to act, we may as well not appear.
Right. And, and of course, the mandate is, you have to be able to make a decision after hearing.
That's right.
And this, in, this concerns, this concerns appeals $100,000 and lower, right? Nothing, anything over that $100,000, the delegated authority would not have that authority.
No, I'm sorry, that's, that's not the case, any, any, any difference at all.
Well, it says, in the policy implications, it says, "Accept or appeal minutes of settlement between impact tax for changes in property tax classes and for assessment reductions up to $100,000."
That's the current policy. That's, that's our current policy, that anything under $100,000 stamp has currently got delegated according to deal with. But over $100,000, and the Dumbo one is a prime example, we have to come to council to get permission to accept minutes of settlement, and appear, and potentially appear at an ARB hearing. I guess, one way to look at that is, is look at the net dollar effect to the township on that $100,000 change in assessment, it sounds like a lot of money, but the net effect to the township is...
$167.
$160.
Yeah. Peanuts.
Well, yeah, but, my point is, does council then give up the right to approve these minutes of settlement?
Yep, that's correct, yeah. And, and as they say, it's, it's, it's something that the regulations has put upon us, that council is required to delegate authority to deal with assessment changes if you want to have a say at, at an ARB hearing.
If I may, Mr. Bear, I wouldn't see this as too much of a risk, I mean, we could, we could still delegate, or allow that delegation to, to staff to exist, but put a fence around what staff is able to do. In other words, you know, some limits, in other words, that are defined by council, which still gives you some control, if you like, over the, the delegate that's attending that particular review.
The legislation permit, though?
I'll let the Treasurer speak to that, I don't believe it does.
Well, as long as I, as long as the representative that's at the ARB combines the contract or the agreed offer. So, unfortunately, if, if you... the agreed offer, so unfortunately, if, if you set a parameter around or a fence, as Mr. Braden is suggesting, where it limits that individual's ability to bind, then you're no further ahead. You, you have to give that individual, now, there's other sections here where you can also by a council resolution designate another individual besides your normal, or like if you appoint a specific municipal rep, you can, if we have another, have a very unusual or very complicated risk assessment change, we could, the council could use a council resolution and, for instance, appoint Dave Pablo or a legal solicitor to go in. You certainly could have conversation if there was, you know, a large assessment being appealed. We could have conversation with, with council as to the comfort level, but I don't think you can bind that individual, that, you know, whatever gets thrown at the table, you have to know what, that that person's going through.
I guess what I'm saying is that if, if the ARB in their adjudication process recommends to, to the board that this particular settlement be agreed to, then the delegate from the township has to make a decision based on, is it, can I sell this back to council, is it going to be acceptable, et cetera, et cetera?
No, no.
No, I don't mean a post fact, sell it back to council, not before. But what I'm saying, what I'm getting at is like an upper limit. In other words, the, the delegate must be in a position to say, "I can't accept that." So I, I'm voting thumbs down on it, okay? So that kind of a limitation is what I'm, guess I'm suggesting that, okay? Not so much the agreement side, because obviously, if it's in favor of, to our favor, or not too much to our detriment, because you can see the numbers aren't really that significant in some way, then the delegate's free to make that final decision. But if it gets to be some ridiculous, you know, kind of judgment from the chair of the ARB or whatever, then I think they have, the delegate should know that, okay, this has gone too far, it's a bridge too far, you know, and I have that. Now, maybe, maybe, you know, our, our staff is quite qualified, so they should be able to make that kind of a judgment.
But, but on the other hand...
But we're speaking for future staffs.
Well, but the main issue here, the main issue here to me, and the reason I brought it up, is because it's a, it's a, it's a further erosion of council responsibility. That's why I brought it up. It is an erosion of council responsibility. I don't have a great deal of problem delegating to, to the treasurer or anybody else, the authority to bind when the assessment amount is a hundred thousand or less. And I think we have to remember as well, that that authority, that delegated authority has the ability to not bind, to say, "No, I'm not going to bind this." You have, so they have that authority. They don't have to say yes, just because the assessment review board comes to the decision that we're going to, we're going to reduce this, it's the commercial industrial taxpayers that are hurting us.
Yeah.
So just because the assessment review board says, "We're prepared to reduce their assessment by a million dollars," the treasurer doesn't have to say, "I agree." They can say, "No, I won't." But I, that's why I think, I would like to see some sort of fence built around it, so that the authority is delegated, but is delegated up to a point.
The, the problem with doing it is, I understand the regulations, the, the intent of the regulation is to speed up the ARB, is to make sure that the cases don't take months and years to get in front of the ARB. So as I understand, if you impose a limit or a fence, then those ARB decisions that go to the board that are above that limit, we can't attend. I mean, we could attend, but we, we don't have a mandate to speak to.
Yeah, but when ABC Industry appeals their assessment, and they appeal to have it drop from five million to four million, so we would know that in advance, would we not? Maybe not. So here goes our treasurer to the, to the ARB, do they not also have the, the right to say, "No"?
No. If, if that's been delegated.
She does. Go ahead.
Just as a follow-up to that, just to show, because, you know, we weren't talking big numbers like they're being thrown around now, but this year, just to show you, we had one incident, and I cannot recall the specific details, but the treasurer brought a briefing note where she was very concerned about something being reassessed. And I remember, I think someone made the comment at the table, and the mayor, your worship yourself, had said, "This is, this is quite unusual, we usually don't get them, us appealing a decision by the, by impact or something." Do you recall, it was something similar along those lines that happened? So it was brought back to us, you know what I mean, in today's, in today's process, but so, you know, by the, I, I don't really have any fears of, and that was a small change, you know, knowing that the staff and how they dealt with that, saying, "This doesn't make sense." I don't know what, I can't remember, but it was, it kind of caught us, "We're finally appealing an appeal," type thing, you know, back, and it was brought forth. You probably remember the incident, I see you're shaking your head, but someone would handle that, that way at the time, so.
Well, my concern is that, I can, I remember sitting at this table, processing refunds of two hundred and fifty thousand, back at quite a number of years ago. Now, was it this table, might have been the other one, but I can remember processing checks of two hundred and fifty thousand.
I don't think we said anything that high, we did have one around fifty, I think, to do the ingredient.
That was over several years.
Yeah, it was a number of years.
A number of years of assessment. Can I, can I speak to your concerns a little bit? In terms of the process with ARB now, what they do is they have a whole set of deadlines and dates where we commence the, the appeal first, then there's several dates where they want to have settlements or conferences prior to an actual hearing.
Yep.
Where, so all of the statements are disclosed, impact provides a statement of disclosure, the appellant does, the township has a, a, a point at which they can submit their statements. That's all shared through the three different organizations. And if there was something of, of any magnitude, there's, it's a long process of dates where there's certainly still opportunity for the municipal rep to come to council, to give all of those bits of information to try to get a better sense of what the appetite of council is. But when I'm at, when that rep is in the hearing, they have to have the authority. They can't say, "I can't bind this."
Why can't they? They're not there to rubber stamp the ARB.
But if you, if you don't give authority, then you have no say.
No, you, you can have authority to bind, you don't have to exercise it.
Well, yeah, but you have to have the binding authority, because if you don't have the binding authority, and you can't have fences around it, because if it goes over a hundred thousand dollars, then I've lost my binding authority, then I don't, then the township has no say, and doesn't matter what the outcome of that hearing is.
This makes no sense.
You would have no say in the, in the hearing if there's no binding authority.
If we read the cover letter, the second last paragraph, the intro is, you know, for implementing new rules and procedures. And included is a mandatory requirement to hold mediation and/or settlement conferences before the actual hearing. So those conferences and mediation meetings, if you want, are going to take place, because it's a mandatory requirement. To participate in the mediation, in other words, prior to the hearing, the township must authorize its appeals representative to make and accept settlement offers at the time, rule eighty-seven. So if you go to this meeting and there's a proposal put forward and everybody but you accepts it, are you kicked out of the meeting? I mean, it says you must make and accept. You can't not accept.
Well, there's a lot of discussion before the settlement actually happens, there's a lot of disclosure from all parties before. So it's not an instantaneous thing. There's, there's several weeks of, of disclosure from various parties, so that everybody's informed of the position.
So you go into this hearing and you're not, there's no surprises?
There should be no surprises, yeah.
But again, but again, if the briefing note, and it doesn't address this issue, but if the briefing note had some sort of level of comfort for council that, and maybe other council members don't care, but I sure do, that, that we were going to be, and I'm not concerned about a hundred grand in assessment, I'm concerned about a million, million and a half, two million, big assessments. If we had some reason or some level of comfort that we're part of that process, either before these mediations hearings occur or, or before they get to the actual hearing, that, that they were going to be discussed at a mid-finance committee meeting, or they're going to be discussed, no reason for them not to be discussed in public, because the whole ARB process is a public process. But if, if the briefing note had indicated that the treasurer is going to keep council informed when it, when the appeal goes over a certain amount, I wouldn't be having as much problem as I'm having with this blanket recommend, these, these, there's actually five, five, six blank, well, five blanket recommendations where council, basically, unless you choose to keep us involved, are not involved, and I think we should be, you know?
And, and that's not a surprise to any of us, that you do it that way. But I think it's important to recognize, even a million dollars of industrial assessment, the net effect on the township is eleven thousand five hundred. You already, you already budgeted thirty-five thousand for tax write-offs, so that's within that amount. We already have delegated authority to department heads in the CAO up to fifty thousand dollars, so that's certainly within that amount. I understand what you're saying, just saying, even a million dollar assessment is an eleven thousand dollar today.
Well, but, but that's a flawed argument. Go ahead, councillor.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, could we achieve that requirement for staff to keep council apprised of substantial deviations from the normal course of things in their, through a different policy, you know, through our management of staff through the CAO, that being a, a performance measure of, of the CAO and not of this policy? I mean, there's spending authority that we give them, but there's judgment that needs to be applied on that. And then we measure their performance based on their judgment. So I'm, I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to get there, but I just, I wouldn't want to have to put it to every policy that has them, has, has staff making a decision that, that we need to, that we need to check their homework at the time, but, but whereas we review their performance as a whole.
And see, I'm looking at it not so much as checking homework, as knowing what's going on. Because my worry is, and I've seen it happen in the last, it's probably been the last ten years, when these industries all across Ontario are appealing their assessments left, right, and center, and they are getting big, big, big reductions. And my worry is that this becomes another gate in the floodway that gets opened. A million dollars here, a million dollars there, and pretty soon you're talking real money. And that's, I, I just, I just have to have a feel for how these things are developing throughout the, not just for our township, but throughout the province. I mean, I spend a lot of time talking to other mayors about what kind of appeals are you getting, what, how much is it costing you, what kind of refunds are you having to process? Go ahead.
Can I not add that into the monthly reports that we recently, we received?
Well, we could, but as councillor Barrett's indicating, he'd rather not do that. But I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind that, if, I mean, if there was something in here that, that, that said that, you know, prior to exercising that authority, there's going to be some kind of a report made to us at a mid-finance committee meeting, I mean, pick a number, when, when the appeal, when the, when the amount under appeal is over five hundred thousand, we'd like to have a report prior to the, prior to the hearing. I don't see, I don't see that that's a big issue. Go ahead.
Can I just, to follow up what you said, well, there, there is a lot of reassessment of industrial and commercial property that's hitting, for example, I can think of the incidents in paper, Canadian Tire, I think Prescott lost three hundred thousand, Rockwell in the same assessment, they're getting it done profits-wise. And Rockwell, I think, lost something like half a million, five hundred thousand. And then you had Crocker Gamble, they've reduced theirs from eight hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, or three, you know, they've lost three hundred thousand in Rockwell on that loan. And I think, so even before this, let's say this delegation of authority to the treasurer, I don't know how much input we had anyway, because I can recall, and I remember bringing it up around the time of the fireman's, the fireman's Thanksgiving dinner, or something now in April, we have at the, you know, the township hall. Around that time, we received, we had to pay back to, I think it was Ingredion this year, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And I think Crismin, it was something like nineteen thousand on that disbursement event. Did we have any say in that at all, or did we have anybody to, to go representing the township on those, or was it just informed through impact that it, it's, here's, here's the assessment, give them back their tax, their tax credit?
Well, you can always refuse to accept minutes of settlement. You can refuse, council can refuse to accept minutes of settlement, right now, you can refuse that. That's the power that I don't want to give up.
But anyway, I'm just saying that it, that it happened, and it's happening across, and, you know, I don't know, to me, this is a way, perhaps this delegation of authority is a way to have somebody at the table when they're discussing these, these, what, reassessments and rebates going back in big numbers. I, I, were you at the table, Melanie, for that?
The property you're talking about with Ingredion was a four-year assessment appeal, so that was why it was as large as it was, it was for four, four years of, of assessment. And the two hundred and fifty was of all of the taxes, not just this, the township's portion, the school board and county.
Okay, so that was the two twenty-four was everybody's, not just ours?
Correct.
So here's, here's my question. If, if we say to you, "We'll, we'll, we'll follow these recommendations, but, but your limit is half a million. We don't want you approving anything that's, we don't want you binding anything that, where the assessment drops by more than half a million." How do they know that you've got that restriction? We've delegated authority to you, you can exercise that authority, you can bind up to that amount, beyond that amount, you just refuse to bind. How do they know? How on earth would they know?
Well, they likely wouldn't, but is that, I mean, is that helpful in any way?
Well, it's helpful to me, because it tells me that if it's over a half million, at least I gotta know what's going on.
May I offer a suggestion? We have some, some basic recommendations here, all of which must be articulated in a bylaw. And the bylaw can include other policy directions, such as making sure that council has written the reports with respect to assessment changes, and those kinds of things are articulated. Maybe the thing to do is to leave it with staff to develop a draft bylaw for committee to consider in the new year.
Comfortable with that? Comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, comfortable with that? So we're not going to deal with the recommendation, we'll just leave it in your hands, then we'll look at your draft bylaw.
Yeah, and, and...
And hope that you address some of these issues.
Yeah, the, this prob, I'm not sure what the deadline is for this to be put in place, Melanie?
Well, our first appeal, chances, the impacts, commencement date is December fifteenth of this year, impact will provide us with their disclosures by January twelfth of twenty eighteen, and we have till February, February sixteenth of twenty eighteen to respond.
What's the size of it?
It's Masterfeeds. It shows the whole value of the property, so it doesn't actually tell me, Masterfeeds is around seven hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Of assessment.
Of total assessment. Of total assessment. I can't see them having a big drop in assessment, but...
But what's their appeal?
They appeal every year.
What, no, but what are they appealing? They're, they're not appealing to get down to a certain amount, they're just making...
We don't know that, we don't know that yet, until they, until they disclose.
Oh, I see.
So the commencement date is the fifteenth of December, and then there'll be disclosure dates in January and February. That's when the township will be aware of all the positions, IMPACT's position, the appellant and...
And Mel, when would it likely be that you would have to go to one of these mediation conferences?
March twenty-second of twenty nineteen. If the appeal is not resolved, each party shall file a necessary documentation with the board, so there's sixty-three to sixty-six weeks of us going back and forth.
So you get, you get some info...
Speeding it up.
You get some info in December, January, and then somewhere around the March or so, we'd have to be in a position to know our final status.
So I guess really, if we brought back the bylaw at the February mid-finance committee meeting for further discussion, it should be okay for timing.
So how many appeals have we gone, are we facing?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Oh, commercial?
No, uh, well, the one is ours against a resident, which won't be, won't be heard until its commencement date is the eighteenth, and I have to file by June.
That's the one where we refuse to accept the minutes of settlement.
Correct, yeah. And then there's Greenfield, which is the usual, every time they file. Globe Realty Holdings, which is, I believe is Royal Bank. And Drummond's.
See, all of these major companies, you mentioned Canadian Tire, they're all hiring province-wide consultants. They're hiring consultants, and the only job the consultant has is appeal.
Yeah, and they get reports about, you know, what's been, who got reduced, and what they got reduced by and so on, so they plan a strategy around that.
Okay, so I think we've, we've come to a consensus here to leave this in the hands of staff and see what kind of a bylaw they're going to draft up for us, and, and hopefully address some of these issues that we've discussed here tonight. So can I move on? Okay, so I'm moving then to item seven C, which is the butternut compensation project. And I have a recommendation here as well.
I'll go with the recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Barrett, and Counselor's, Counselor's name? Any discussion on the recommendation? I'm not going to read it. No? Those in favor? It's carried. And then seven D is the emergency management program, and...
Maybe just before we go on, Mr. Mayor, if we, welcome to this item seven C. The other day I was thinking, if the township, if we're promoting our industrial lands and industrial park, and we want to expand that capability in the years going forward, so if we're trying to sell pieces of land to industries and commercial enterprises, do we have a duty to do, like, to know what's on that property with respect to trees of this nature or other species at risk, or whatever they may be, blinding turtles or whatever?
But there's two answers to that question, and the first is for the property that's got Ontario Site certification, we've done it. We've done that, we've done all of those, all of those surveys. To properties that have, that don't have Ontario Site certification, it's owner's risk.
And developer must do a species at risk.
So, but owner's risk? We're the owner if it's...
Well, for example, not always.
No, but if we are the owner...
Yeah, if we are the owner, yeah.
Then we take the risk that there's something there that could be at risk.
Yeah, so a good example is the, the two hundred and seventy acres that was certified by the province as being development-ready. We did find eleven butternut trees on that property, and were able to persuade the province to not get too excited about it, because development was well away from where the, where the trees are. But, you know, if giant tiger pushes north the way they intend to and starts getting close to where those butternut trees are...
But they're the owner now.
But they're the owner now, but they are aware of it.
Yeah.
Right, that's part of their...
So they took that risk on.
Yeah.
And you see, the whole point of us having this grow is if they, if they do move farther north and they do find that they've got twelve butternut trees that have to be compensated, we've got compensating trees available that they can purchase from.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're covered, that's all.
It's actually garnering a significant amount of interest.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a recommendation on the table, and the recommendation has been moved by Barrett, seconded by Smale, and it has been carried.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I'm moving then to the last one, which is the emergency management program. The purpose is to recommend adoption of an emergency management program bylaw. There is a recommendation. Counselor Morell? And who, who two guys got your head down? Mister Robertson, you seconding the recommendation?
Yes.
Two guys.
Wait up, David.
We don't sell immigrants.
Okay, is there, is there...
You get the breaking new fryer.
Is there one in place already, and this is just an update?
We do have an emergency management program, just that it hasn't been adopted by bylaws.
There are several components to an emergency management program, and we've developed, we have adopted each of those components by bylaw, but apparently the province wants it all in one document now, so.
Could I answer my question? It's been, it's been developed, it's been exercised, it's been reviewed, it's been updated, and now it's going to be bylaw?
Yes, again.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried, or the recommendation is carried. Okay, so now that's the end of item seven. Item eight on the agenda is council inquiries, notices, or motions. Hearing none, vote to move on. I don't have a mayor's report tonight, except to report that I have county council tomorrow, and I haven't read the package. Item number ten is the question period. No, no questions tonight? We have no closed session. Chair's looking for a motion to adjourn Counselor Smale, and seconded by Counselor Morell. Those in favor?
I'm happy.
Motion is carried.
I'm hungry.